Call a meeting of the San Carlos City Planning Commission Meeting of January 7th to order. First, will you join me in standing and pledging allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Even though we're one week into it, I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Happy, healthy, and prosperous. And we'll have roll call next.
Commissioner Roof?
Present.
Commissioner Yakapony is absent this evening. Commissioner Dugan?
Here.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Here.
And Chair Bradley?
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval of the minutes to be considered of our last meeting, December 17th of 2018. Any corrections? Hearing none or seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting for December 17th, 2018. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you. Minutes stand approved as written. Public hearings, the procedure for public hearings are, the staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with the staff's recommendations. The applicant will make a presentation. Thereafter, interested members of the community may speak on the proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Planning Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else has raised at the public hearing described in the notice or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door over in the corner and hand it to one of the recording secretary or any of us prior to addressing the Planning Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone and speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist the staff in preparing the minutes. We have two cases before us this evening. The first is 1659 Industrial and secondly, proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance of the San Carlos City Municipal Code, Chapters 18.24, paren wireless telecommunications facilities, paren, and the proposed removal of the San Carlos Municipal Code, Chapter 12.32, wireless communication facilities. So we'll start with the sign project at 1659 Industrial. And we have a staff report. Rebecca, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Rebecca Wyson, the planning technician. This evening, I am presenting a request for design review for a wall sign for Hilti. So per San Carlos Municipal Code, any sign that is located next to Highway 101 is required to go before Planning Commission. This site is located at the northern border of Redwood City and between there and Britton, as well as between Industrial and Highway 101. The sign is east-facing along the facade of the building. This site is allocated 100 square feet of signage per San Carlos Municipal Code 18.22090. That governs signage in San Carlos. The applicant proposes to add 67.3 square feet of freeway-oriented wall sign that will read "Hilti." The words are five inches thick, white aluminum constructed channel letters. The letters are 174.5 inches wide by 25 inches high, and they are on a red flat aluminum panel, and they will be mounted to the wall. Staff received no comments or letters regarding this project. And this is the motion you would make should you choose to approve this application. And I am also available for questions.
My only question is, I've seen that sign in town. Is this replacing an existing sign, or is this an additional building they now have? Do you happen to know that?
So this is a new location. They might have had a previous location, but this is a new location for them. So there was no signage there before.
I had a question. It says warehousing. What kind of storage will they place there? Do you know that?
I believe it's a construction warehouse kind of store. I'm not sure of the exact details, but I believe that's what they do, more of.
It says the past use was plumbing supplies, I think. So something similar.
Yeah. It's not a massive amount of people.
Well, most of you know that I'm opposed to signs on the freeway. I think they're a safety hazard, and I keep saying that's the last one I'm going to vote for, but I keep voting for them. I don't see anything here that violates the code. They seem to be in compliance with the size and lighting and placement and so forth of these. Again, I hate to see. We've got more signs than Redwood City or Belmont, our neighbors to the north and the south of us, and I just don't like the signs race. I think it belittles our city, the city of good living. We should also strive to be the city of safe freeway driving and try to limit the number of freeway-oriented signs. On the other hand, it is informational. There's only five letters in the sign, and the one is so small, they won't be able to see it from more than 12 feet away, I'm sure. But that's my speech for this evening on this subject. Any more questions?
Well, this will be illuminated. Is there any timer on that, or it's going to burn all night long?
I believe it's all night long. Yeah. But it's not near any residential.
So right across from it's like the airport?
Yeah. Though it won't affect residential.
Only planes trying to land. No, I'm kidding.
And are there standards for the brightness that are applied as a matter of?
I believe it's similar to a lot of the other ones that have been approved by Planning Commission in the past. A lot of other ones are the similar type of lettering.
Some lumens definition of how bright a sign can be?
I believe so. Yeah. Yes.
Okay. That's reassuring. I mean, I agree with the aesthetic concern, although the signs that are mounted directly on the buildings seem to be less obvious and less of a distraction than the pre-standing ones that we approved several of. So I don't see a problem with this myself.
What packet page are the conditions? I'm looking for the conditions.
Page 10.
Any questions on the conditions? All right. Will the public hearing be closed?
Second. Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Anyone care to make a motion?
Yeah. I have no concerns over this design. I move that the Planning Commission approve the request for design review approval of an approximately 67.3 square foot, square feet of signage for Hilti at 1659 Industrial based on the required findings and for the reasons as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you for the votes. And next is the wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance proposal and removal.
Through the chair, if I may, and it could be just my mistake, but I wasn't sure if we took public comment at the beginning of this meeting, just general public comment. Does anyone remember? I, for some reason, think it wasn't done.
No, I didn't. That's my error. I skipped right over it there.
I just wanted to double-check since we have one member in the audience, just in
Thank you, Lyndon. Should I make it now?
Sure.
Okay. Public comment is limited to items not on the agenda. The Planning Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the Planning Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for their attention or have a matter placed on a future Planning Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. And I apologize for skipping over that, trying to do things too fast in the new year, I guess. At least there's not a huge audience that heard my blunders.
Five people watching.
Lyndon understands. Okay. So we have staff report on the wireless.
Okay, no public comment then. Yes. Good evening, Chair Bradley and Commissioners. I'm Lisa Porras, Principal Planner for the City of San Carlos, and will be presenting this item to you this evening. And joining me tonight is Deputy City Attorney Kai Reese, who assisted staff in ensuring the proposed wireless ordinance would be consistent with state and federal laws, and has also helped other municipalities draft their wireless ordinances as well. Also with me tonight is Associate Planner Andrea Marticich, who understands the city's permitting procedures after many reviews of wireless applications, and she's worked with a variety of telecommunications providers. So we're all available tonight to answer any questions you may have. So to get started, I just thought, I think we all know what these facilities are, but there is some new technology that is coming out. And so just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page as we look at this draft ordinance this evening. So as you may know, wireless facilities consist of large antennas, and they're typically attached to a pole or a tower. They can be mounted on the tops of buildings, or they can be hidden or concealed within the architecture of some structures. When we look around, we typically see the larger antennas, which are also referred to as macro facilities. These are the ones we see mostly in our environment today. But in addition to the antennas, wireless facilities also include associated equipment, which is oftentimes placed in above-ground cabinets and screened from view, either by strategic placement or through landscaping or other site features. And these facilities are in fact required to be permitted by the city and receive a building permit before they can be installed. So currently, San Carlos's municipal code has two chapters that govern wireless facilities. Chapter 1824 is in the zoning ordinance, and it sets forth the standards, requirements, and permitting procedures. Chapter 12.32 is within the streets, sidewalks, and public places ordinance, and basically regulates wireless facilities due to their nature or anytime they're proposed in the right-of-way or on city property. So due to the duplicative nature of Chapter 12.32, staff is recommending that it be removed entirely. And key components of that chapter have been inserted into the proposed ordinance before you this evening so that regulations for wireless facilities, whether they're on private or public property, are codified in one place. So the current regulatory environment pretty much sets the framework for the wireless ordinance update. And the foundation of laws that we have today that govern wireless facilities was pretty much set into place in 1996 when the U.S. Congress passed the Telecommunications Act. And this act essentially prevents local jurisdictions from prohibiting telecommunications services, including wireless services. Then, 16 years later, in 2012, Congress passed another act that took aim at the review process, mandating that cities cannot require discretionary review for projects that don't significantly change or alter an existing wireless facility. In 2014, the FCC interpreted the 2012 act by further defining what a substantial change means, and it also set shot clock or deadlines for acting on a wireless facility. Failure to act essentially means that the city must issue all necessary permits without further delay. And due to emerging technology, which I'll discuss a little later in this presentation, this emerging technology and the widespread increase of usage in the Internet, last September, the FCC further ordered that deployment of micro or small cell wireless facilities be removed from local regulatory barriers and set forth even shorter shot clocks for these types of applications. So just to clarify, there are shot clocks for the macro or larger facilities, and then there are separate shot clock requirements for the micro or small cell facilities. And together, both the 1996-2012 acts and the FCC rulings set these mandates for wireless facilities. Cities cannot outright deny the wireless facilities, but cities do have some local control to address visual impacts and to assure that the best possible design and technology is used. So as I mentioned, essentially, these sort of land into four principal mandates assigned to the cities. And again, cities cannot prohibit or adopt an ordinance that has the effect of prohibiting the provision of wireless telecommunications services. These state mandates also set levels of acceptable radio frequency or RF emissions for these facilities, and it prohibits discretionary review of existing facilities that propose minor or insignificant changes. You may hear this, you know, this component referred to as the Section 6409A rule, and that's actually the language that's included in the code, and you may have seen it there as well. And then the fourth principal mandate is again the shot clocks. And this slide here just really sort of provides the exact deadlines for reviewing and approving applications. So if you're a new, brand-new facility, the city has 150 days to act. If you're a new, large facility, and the first two bullets are for the larger or macro facilities, if you're a large facility and you choose to co-locate, which means you go on an existing structure, or you locate where maybe there's another wireless provider already there, then you have not, the city has 90 days. And then, again, just recently, this past September, the FCC set new shot clocks for small cells specifically, which they have shortened review periods. So if you co-locate on an existing facility, the city has 60 days to review, but if it's a new site, there's 90 days to review those. So what can cities do? Well, the city can impose aesthetic requirements, as long as they're reasonable, that they're no more burdensome than those applied to other types of infrastructure, and they're published in advance. So the existing ordinance clearly cites that the city requires the best available design and technology from the industry. The existing ordinance also sets forth design and location standards and then ranks them by preference. If a lower rank option is used, the applicant must provide technical information and demonstrate why the higher-ranked option is not technically feasible. The proposed ordinance carries this forward, but also adds preferences for undergrounding equipment and further screening to avoid and reduce visual impacts. So now I just wanted to touch upon small cells and how this is a little bit different. And the main, you know, piece of information that I wanted to share is that we're going to start to see small cell deployments in residential neighborhoods. The macro facilities, you're going to see along the freeway in commercial or industrial areas. You generally don't see these in residential neighborhoods unless maybe they're in the park, on top of a tall pole, or in the case of San Carlos, there are a couple of Cal water tanks, and some cell providers have located facilities there. So when they're close to the neighborhood, they tend to get a lot of attention, as the commission may already know. But due to the emerging technology of small cell wireless facilities, what's included in the draft ordinance is a new Section 1824.120, and this specifically addresses small cell wireless facilities. And essentially, small cells are generally defined as low-powered cellular radio access nodes, and they're deployed using far more nodes, more densely spaced than macro facilities in order to meet capacity demands. These small cell facilities can be installed on light poles, traffic lights, utility poles such as PG&E poles, and other similar property in residential, commercial, and industrial, essentially anywhere. And the image to the right is just to kind of give you an idea of, you know, what those generally look like in a diagrammatic way. So the installation of these facilities, as you may know, is being driven by the next generation of wireless speed, also known as 5G, and the significant growth in what's referred to as the Internet of Things, which is an industry term used to describe wireless data transfer between a range of devices, from home appliances like Nest, Alexa, Echo, keyless entry systems, to smartphones, virtual reality, to self-driving or automated cars, as is anticipated in the future. So all of this is fueling the need for stronger and faster service with improved connectivity. So generally, small cell facilities will be reviewed by staff or the zoning administrator, given the tight processing times. And we anticipate that small cell wireless facilities are going to be proposed in the near future. What the ordinance sets forth is that when the small cell facilities are proposed in residential neighborhoods, within 600 feet of or within these residential neighborhoods, they would be reviewed by the zoning administrator. And the zoning administrator has the authority, per the code, to send those up to the Planning Commission if it's warranted. If there's an area in the city, say for example, where there's a wide array of interest from the community, and it would be best served to hear it before the Planning Commission, the code is designed to allow that. Where the small cell deployments are outside and away from residential districts, they could be processed by staff. And there's some examples in your pocket you may have seen at the very end and sort of what those tend to look like. So these next couple of slides really are set to just maybe give, there's a lot of text in here, but I can generally sum up what they include, but it's to outline our existing permit procedures and then our proposed permit procedures under the new draft ordinance. And essentially, if a facility meets certain criteria, it can be reviewed by the zoning administrator. In very fewer cases, such as minor modifications or replacements of existing antennas, that can be done at staff level, and we issue what's called a code compliance certificate. So all, you know, otherwise required requirements that are imposed by the FCC RF emissions, all of that documentation still needs to be submitted, but because the application is just a minor replacement, those are done at the staff level. And anything else that doesn't meet that, it all goes to Planning Commission. So for example, right now, small cell wireless facilities, all of them, each, and again, because they're more densely populated, we expect to have, you know, 20 to 40 to 60, it just depends on how quickly certain wireless carriers submit those. But because of the tight processing times, we wanted to take that out and put it under the authority of the zoning administrator, again with a caveat that if we feel it's necessary, we can bring some of those forward to the Planning Commission. So as you can see in this slide here, the left-hand column or the second to the left-hand column, there's more provisions that allow staff-level review. And this is not only because of the small cell, but also because of this new Section 6409 rule whereby if an existing facility is proposing something that is not a significant change, it can be reviewed by staff. And if I missed anything, we have Kai Reese here to clarify, but I think I've got this covered. It's a lot of different criteria or filters that you have to go through. And if you meet those, you can go to the ZA. If not, it goes to the Planning Commission.
So I have a quick, I guess I'd say, a new Planning Commissioner question for you. Who is our zoning administrator? When do they meet? And is that a public process, or how does that work?
Sure. The zoning administrator in the City of San Carlos is in fact our city manager. So Jeff Maltby serves as a zoning administrator. And essentially, what wireless facilities are required to get is a use permit. So it'd be a use permit through the zoning administrator. And then use permits, because of the fact that they are a use permit, that permit type, they fall under the same procedures as a use permit that would come to the Planning Commission. So everyone within 300 feet, I would say all property owners within 300 feet of the site, would receive a notification, and the zoning administrator hearings are indeed public. But we can schedule them, we have the flexibility to schedule them anytime we want during the week, provided that it works well for the applicant. We want the applicant to be there, and then also for the zoning administrator, Jeff Maltby's schedule. So most of the time, we have these during the day, but they are open to the public.
Got it. And do these, do we have like one a month, or how frequently do these happen?
We have them when we need them. I would say maybe once or twice.
Once or twice a year.
Five or six a year.
Okay.
Yeah. But with this new small cell, we could be having more of them because of this particular type of application.
Thank you.
So most of these things that are in staff-level code looks like what we were actually approving last year, the years before. So that's been changed to staff approval, because basically we couldn't do anything anyway, except for approve it. Okay, all right.
It's a frustrating part for.
Yeah. We did everything we could. Okay. All right. That makes sense.
Just moving on, the proposed ordinance does carry forward, as I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the general structure for design and location preferences. And they're sort of ranked by preference in the code. And when the highest rank can't be achieved, we require the applicant to provide technical information to demonstrate why they can't. And for the most part, what we want, as is shown in the first bullet, is that we really don't want to see them. We don't want them to be visible, you know, to conceal them from view, integrate them into the design of buildings. I don't know if we have any like that in San Carlos. There's one. Which one? Do you want to say where it is?
So we do have one that's within the existing Ross sign over in the plaza. If you look at it closely, there's sort of two rectangular cutouts that are covered with like mesh material, and there's antennas behind that, but those are the only ones we've seen.
And in some cities, they might hide them in a clock tower or something like that. But that's our preference in terms of, you know, to conceal them as much as possible. When that can't be done, there are certain setbacks requirements for being away from the edge of a roof and not being visible. Preferably, we want them away from residential districts, although with a small cell technology, that's going to be more difficult to achieve. And then, you know, our preference is that they go into industrial or airport districts. And then, you know, our preference is that they go into industrial or airport districts, and basically on anything non-residential. We also prefer co-locating so that instead of having more independent facilities spread throughout, that they sort of co-locate where, and we have quite a few of co-locations in the city. Equipment should be, you know, painted to match or blend in, or a cabinet could be designed to blend in with the existing architecture of the commercial building, if that's the case. What's sort of new in the draft ordinance is that we specifically call out the cabinet and ground-mounted equipment. To the extent that it's technically feasible, we prefer those to be underground. And then overall, you know, they just have to demonstrate that they're using the least intrusive design for the proposed location.
So the one that I remember the most, that had the most impact on me, is when we had one that, an existing cell tower that really was camouflaged by a very large unprotected tree, the pine tree, I think it was on the Cal Water property or something like that. They did something, took the tree down, and now Melandia overlooks a huge cell tower. And I know that at that point, we discussed making zoning modific, and there's really nothing we could do about it. I know we'd had a special meeting and everything on it. But what we decided that we wanted to do is try to tighten up the code around camouflaging the actual cell towers. And I think we can do stuff on new, new towers going up, but I don't know if we're still in the same pickle when it has to do with existing cell towers, and if there's still a vulnerability there. Not that we can do anything about it, but that's the one that sticks out in my mind that we really fought the hardest against to try to protect the community, and we really couldn't. So I don't know if maybe at the end of the presentation, you could speak to that and how, how this code change at least tries to address that.
Okay. All right. And then the next slide, I just wanted to point out the findings for approval. And these will look familiar, you know, that they're consistent with the general plan and the design requirements in the code, that they follow and comply with all applicable safety codes and laws. They don't interfere with the public's use of the right-of-way or create any undue risks or safety hazards. They need to be compliant with FCC regulations for radio frequency emissions, where there's historic sites or buildings, they avoid any adverse effect on those, they comply with all necessary local, state, federal approvals, including CEQA if that is applicable. And again, just as a reminder, these findings for approval, they need responses. And if you attend, and I'll mention this later this evening, the planning commissioner's training, one of the topics is discussing findings of approval, and how it's really important for the record and for staff and the applicant to work together to be able to prepare those findings and basically respond. In the case that I'm showing here, for example, the alternative designs or locations were considered. And so there'd actually need to be information and a discussion on how that was done in order to be able to meet the finding. So I just wanted to mention that. And then lastly, we did include a new finding for approval where the wireless facility would need to demonstrate that they're using the best available design and technology to eliminate adverse impacts to visual and aesthetic qualities of the surrounding environment. Impacts to the community from noise and vibration, we've heard of that sometimes, because sometimes in the cabinet, there'll be a fan or cooling equipment. So we make, need to make sure that the cabinet and that little structure is compliant with the city's noise ordinance, and that the wireless facility doesn't impact any pedestrian or public places. So this is just a quick summary of the findings for approval.
And I'm sorry, Lisa, this is findings for our approval of this new ordinance or of each review under this ordinance?
Of the draft ordinance, the findings of approval of a wireless facility in, yeah, not for approving this draft ordinance.
The question I have is the last bullet point, because that is a subjective standard, and we're being, you know, rather explicitly told we can not maintain any subjective standards, and they all have to be objective standards. So I'm curious, how can we be asked to make a subjective finding when we actually don't have that authority?
Well, my understanding and the way that this works, and maybe the city attorney will respond as well, is that the applicant is required to provide information. It's sort of like showing their homework, that they reviewed the available technology, that they looked at the site, that they considered the surrounding environment, they looked at what, you know, what the technology allows them to do, and based upon all of that put together, they're submitting to the city the best that they can offer. And what the finding would require is that, you know, show us how you did that, you know, because of X, Y, or Z factors. And in each case, it'll be unique. We don't have a one-size-fits-all design standard for these wireless facilities, because they're going to be located on different types of things, whether it's, you know, existing utility pole, on a building, on an existing tower or pole, and in different locations. So that's why, and I think that's why in 2011, when the wireless ordinance was last updated, I wasn't here at the time, why the city chose to put forth essentially a ranking by preference for both design and location, rather than one specific formula for how each one should look. So this update carries that forward, but in addition to the general findings that we already had, we included a specific finding that will put the wireless facility provider on, on the hook to show us that they chose the best possible design, and that that's actually a finding that we need to make.
I mean, I think that was a pretty good answer. I would just say that the objective is, if the carrier comes in and says, "We need to have a site," the answer has to be yes, essentially. Where the subjective comes in is, the city gets to say, "Are you choosing the best possible site, given the direction that we have in our ordinance? And on top of that, given your proposal, what else can the city require to make sure that the site you've selected is, I guess the effects of the site that you've selected are mitigated to the extent that they can be mitigated?"
What it says in residential areas, that's not on individual property, right? That's on like a park or something like that in a residential area? What's it mean? Obviously, I can't imagine it meaning they can go stick a pole on someone's property.
Right. So A, we would, the city through the ordinance is saying that we prefer it not be on a residential parcel.
You said prefer.
Right.
You said the word prefer, but that's just a mean mandate.
So in most cases, in most cases, it'll be in the right-of-way, particularly because now governance above the city have made it fairly easy for carriers and inexpensive to get into the right-of-way. So I think that's naturally going to occur. To the extent that a carrier would ever have to go on a residential parcel because it could not figure out how to offer coverage with a different, more suitable site, they would have to have the permission from the property owner to actually do that in addition to the permit from the city.
Okay. They'd have to have permission?
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
On these findings, if through this process, you know, we're not prepared to make one of these findings, I guess we can only do that on an objective ground? I mean, is that how this plays out? If I'm not comfortable they've used the best available design, what does that look like? I just say, you know, I don't think that's the best available design, I don't approve it, and then what happens?
Well, that's sort of a, that would be sort of case-specific. But like, let's say, for example, a carrier comes in and says, "We want to install this, this facility on this brand-new pole," right? That doesn't yet exist. And staff asks the carrier, "Why can't you go on this existing pole that's, you know, 20 feet away or something like that?" If the carrier doesn't really have an answer to that, then that's probably a legitimate reason to tell them, "No, you can't have the new pole, go back to the drawing board." Now, if they come up with a reason why they cannot use the existing pole, or why they have to have the new pole, say the existing pole wouldn't hold the weight or something along those lines, then your hands are a little more tied, to be frank.
In the past, they've used its cost prohibitive as their reason. Is there any way that, I mean, I can see them using it again. I mean, they have their lawyers, there's some of their lawyers here, they know what they can and can't do, so you can't talk around them.
Right.
So is that something that is, they can still use as a potential reason why they couldn't use an existing pole, for example?
So I'm hesitant to say, just sort of in a hypothetical sense, yes or no. Again, that's sort of a fact-specific determination. If it really is astronomically expensive, and it really is cost prohibitive, then there probably is grounds to grant the application. But if it's real, if it's just, this is going to be slightly more expensive for us to do, then I think we have a little bit more leeway there.
Yeah, but I guess, you know, the ones we did over the last few years, they haven't been too eager to negotiate. They're pretty much mandated. So I know we're putting all this in here, but I don't know if it's really going to give us much teeth. I mean, that's not, and that's really out of our hands, so I guess I can just be quiet. This is like been, you know, be at my bonnet for a while.
And if I may, it's in my notes, but I must have skipped over it. One of the things I'd like to add is that what is also new to the, to this ordinance is specifically, and it would be codified, right, because it's actually in the ordinance, is a requirement for the wireless applicants to meet with staff before they submit. So what we're hoping to do is to be able, you know, we know we need to approve them, we're going to work with them on getting the best possible design, but in that spirit, like what can we do in advance to make sure what we are taking forward, like once that shot clock is triggered when they submit? One of the things that we're requiring of them is to meet with us beforehand. The process for a, you know, proposing a small cell wireless facilities in residential areas requires them to do neighborhood outreach, and we want that done before they submit. And they're also required to set up an appointment with staff at the time they submit, so we can make sure to go through all of the materials that they're submitting and make sure that we have everything we need before the actual shot clock is activated. So there's a couple of new components in the ordinance that sort of try to, you know, basically get at a better design through coordination and collaboration early on.
That's okay.
If I can just add one more thing. I think sort of at the 30,000-foot level, the best way to think about this is that in 1996, Congress said, "Everybody needs to have really fast phone service," right? And ever since then, we've been sort of figuring out, how do we get there, right? And what the law has sort of developed to be since that time is, okay, local jurisdictions, you need to move fast on this stuff, and you can't be so restrictive that we can't accomplish the goal of getting everybody fast wireless service. But you can still have some control over all this, right? But to do so, you have to be proactive. So you have to sort of reserve your ability to regulate these things. So that's really what we're trying to do with this ordinance.
Yeah, and I actually, from what you're saying there, Lisa, that actually makes about the most, has about more teeth in it than I think of anything I've heard here so far. So I mean, just having come through this, I'm really, really glad to see that that's in there proactively.
So if, in approval, if we take the position, you know, it doesn't meet one of these findings because they could have put it on that nearby pole instead of putting up a new pole, for example, does that satisfy the shot clock? And then when they resubmit, the shot clock resets? Or can they just run out the clock on us and be approved?
So in my experience, when we've actually run up against a similar situation, because sometimes carriers do, you know, they're like any other applicant, right? Sometimes it's sort of, they put, they put their application on the back burner, right? They don't quite get around to it, and there's a shot clock ticking. So in those cases, we've gone back to the carrier and said, "Okay, either A, we're going to take your item to the planning commissioner or the zoning administrator, and we're going to recommend that it not be approved because you have not supplied the information that we need to make a determination on it before the shot clock expires, or you need to enter into a tolling agreement with the city to essentially give more time beyond the shot clock." So that's sort of how we handle.
I see. But, and, and the decision makers' disapproval, like, that satisfies the shot clock? Like, they have to then reapply and, you know, it's a new shot clock at that point?
So that, that's actually sort of a gray area, but the, I think the best way to look at that is, yes, the shot clock is satisfied when they, in this case, if the planning commission saw an application, when the planning commission makes a determination, the applicant, if you denied the application, would probably appeal that. But once they get through the, the appeal process, if they don't take some sort of other action, they could just reapply, and then it would be a new shot clock.
I see. And then with regard to the shot clock running out and them getting deemed approval, is that, they get a deemed, like, does that also deem that the decision maker made these findings?
So, no. And the deemed approval, not to get too far down in the weeds here, but the deemed approval really only applies to 6409A applications, and that's for non-substantial changes to an existing facility site. The other shot clocks are not, don't result in a deemed approved, but they are de facto presumed to be an unreasonable delay. So the, the operable difference there is, if you don't act on a 6409A application, on day 61, the applicant can send you a letter that says, "You failed to meet the shot clock, we're doing what we asked to do, and you can either issue the permit or not, we're doing it." The other ones, it just means that the city is beyond the reasonable time it has to act on the application, and then that sort of opens the city to liability if the carrier takes it to that, that point.
I see. Kind of my last, you know, I don't think this last finding is fair to ask of any of the decision makers, whether it be staff, the zoning administrator, or the commission. You know, the, our powers have been largely usurped, and I'm comfortable making the other findings, which are quite objective, but I just don't think it's fair that our authority to really review these things has been completely usurped, and yet we're going to be expected to make these subjective findings. So, you know, I would, I guess, would like an explanation of, you know, can that not be one of the findings we're expected to make?
The answer is yes. If you want to remove that from the required findings and pass it on to the city council with the recommendation that that portion of the draft ordinance be removed, that's, that's within your, your discretion.
Thank you.
I have a question. Technology advances over time, and what may be sort of the best available, most, the best compromise now may not be in the future. Is there any provision for updating equipment or requiring companies to update equipment?
To the extent that a carrier would come back in and apply for a use permit modification, yes, we could say at that point, "Okay, your existing facility is X amount of years old, is there a better way that you could do the entire facility?" But in terms of just routine upgrading, no. That being said, I think really what's going to drive that is going to be the actual carriers who want to have the better technologies out there, because it costs less money to operate. Put it this way, the, the sites you see today take less power and do a better job of providing coverage, right? So it's really going to be the carriers, assuming that trajectory continues, it'll really be the carriers that will want to have the updated equipment.
So, so this really annoying cell tower, tower that Shannon was referring to, perhaps that technology will become obsolete, but why would the company bother to take it down? Costs money to do that.
Well, if they no longer use it, then they're obligated to take it down under the ordinance.
That was another question I have. They no longer, and if they go out of business, is there any way to?
Then the city could technically go in and take it down if it actually is abandoned. So in the case that a company went out of business, that would probably be the logical way that that would get dealt with. But my guess would be that if a carrier went out of business... But my guess would be that if a carrier went out of business, their assets would probably get sold off to some other carrier.
But the, the law does say if it's no longer used, they need to remove the equipment?
Yes.
As part of the, okay. That's good, because that's.
They don't even own the poles.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that was another thing that came up, was, you know, we asked them to camouflage some of the poles, and they go, "Wow, we don't know who owns it." So there was like four carriers on the pole, and no one knew who owned the areas, and they feigned that they couldn't make the improvements because they weren't the owner of the pole.
So, more often than not, the owner?
I don't have to go there, but I'm just saying, just.
Sure. Well, I think it's, in that, for what it's worth, in that sort of an instance, I think it's fair to ask the applicant to figure out who owns the pole.
And then through the chair, I just wanted to mention that on packet page 47, there is a section in the draft ordinance that discusses the abandonment, removal, or relocation of facilities, and the process for that. So that's under proposed section 1824-190, just as an FY informational. So I will go ahead and continue, and if there's more questions, well, we're going to wrap this, my presentation will be done in a minute, we can continue to ask questions and take public comment. Staff did publish a notice in the newspaper back on December 6th, and we also posted it on some of our social media sites, such as Facebook and Twitter, and I haven't received no voicemails or emails, or received any comments as of the release or the publication of the notice. And finally, this is the motion, if you wish to make it. And again, Andrea, Kai, and I are all available for questions. Thank you.
We're still in the public hearing mode, and we have one speaker tonight. Some of you know Linda Burrows, who's on our residential design review committee here in the city. Linda, would you come up?
Thank you, commissioners. I'm just here as a resident of San Carlos, and this is an area that I have had some concern about, having moved to San Carlos about 25 years ago now. It's probably one of the very few communities that have $2 million homes where you look out the window and you see sagging wire lines because of the poles and the connections and so on. And I, I just wanted to get better understanding, since the city seems to be at a crossroads of, of having to accommodate more for technology purposes. Because we are also, as a community, getting to be substantially more dense by the week, it seems, the, the requirements of, of power and access is going to continue to soar. So I kind of, maybe some of these questions might be naive, but I kind of wanted to know to what extent the power lines for cable and so on could be required to be hidden for multifamily units, to what extent that would be helpful as we are introducing now more of the small cells. I looked at page 94, and attaching small cells to existing poles is extremely unattractive, and probably even more so if it's your view from the dining room or whatever room. It adds more bulk and attention to an already unattractive necessity. I was wondering the extent to which stats might be required of applicants with regard to the power usage of the small cells, of the, the decibel level, if periodic reviews might be required in anticipation of a more improved option? The lifespan of a cell, is that something that we have knowledge of that can be written into the application at the front end? You know, as we look at, I'm presuming, other communities and so forth? Because as we are more densely populated, obviously, the, the need is going to accelerate. So I would just urge the, the commissioners to kind of press the pause a little bit and recognize the extent to which, once the horse is out of the gate, there's no turning back. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Anyone have some answers for those questions?
Sure, I'll, I'll start, and I'll try to answer some of the questions. So there is the comment about, you know, overhead wires in the community, and what does the city do or can do with respect to these? There is a provision in our ordinance that, for all new development, that underground utility, the utilities be underground to the extent that it's feasible, knowing that sometimes you can't technically do it. And this essentially works whereby, you know, a pole may not necessarily be, be taken down, but if it can be done, at least the wire coming from that pole in the connection to, say, it's a new house or a new mixed-use building, the utilities would need to be underground. I know that's challenging for developers sometime in sort of coordinating the requirements and the feasibility of that, kind of looking at what the city requires, and then working with the utility providers can be somewhat challenging. But that is the very reason why we have that in our ordinance, is that slowly, slowly over time, as new development is proposed, that more and more of those overhead wires and other types of similar equipment can be underground and not, you know, located in the right of way. As far as decibels and sound is concerned, the city does have a noise ordinance that sets forth those noise thresholds. And whether you are or not, or not proposing a new development, the noise ordinance is always in place. So even for a new use that goes into place, or a new building, or any type of operation, even if there's not a current permit on file or under review, you still have to comply with the city's noise ordinance. And any kind of concern that a use or an activity is presenting a large amount of noise or unnecessary noise, that's handled through code enforcement. So code enforcement is part of our building division, and anyone can file a complaint or an investigation on noise, and then our code enforcement officers, officers go to the site and with their instruments and measure the noise to see if there's any non-compliance with the noise ordinance. And then I think the last thing was periodic review, and, did you have? Yeah, just a minute. That's not in there now? But we can't? Oh, can you mention it? Okay. And then, I think that was it. Was there anything else that I missed?
I very much appreciate your thoroughness in all that you do to the staff. I want to say that. When I was talking about decibel level, I was really trying to get a sense of the extent to which we had knowledge of what was the average decibel level for a solid unit, so to speak, so that we, at the front end, could, as a, as a city, really require that the provider put out his best product for us, and that it not escalate to a point where it's, you know, reaching the noise ordinance of the city, but, but giving us the best, the best product on, on the market. And I was talking about the possibility of review to force the provider to replace the unit periodically to, again, to upgrade. That, that was maybe a naive request, but that's what the request was.
Sounds reasonable to me, Linda. Let's, how move, we close the public hearing?
And through?
We can, we can still have discussion, right?
And through the chair, just to answer your question about requiring carriers to update their technology, you know, if it's already been installed and new technology comes out, what can we do at that point? There is the ability to put a time limit on the conditional use permits, as long as it's a minimum of 10 years. So at that point, if, if it expired the use permit, they would have to reapply at that point and be under the current code, I would assume, the current wireless code at that time. So that might be an option, and I don't believe that's in the ordinance now, that provision.
It's not in the ordinance right now. Staff and I had sort of preliminary discussions about that idea early on in the drafting process, and sort of came to the conclusion that having expiration dates on use permits for facilities that probably will exist beyond 10 years might become burdensome to re-review every site every 10 years, because we're anticipating quite a few of these. And we also thought, in terms of the technology upgrades, we thought that the market would probably drive that quicker than 10 years anyway. So we sort of backed off that as a concept, but it is out there if the commission wants to explore that.
That is something that I would be interested in exploring, because, because I'm kind of thinking about the existing ugly cell towers, and are we ever going to be rid of them? And without some mechanism to make that happen, they could use them in a very inefficient way, but still be using them, so they were, and they may, the companies may not be motivated to, to remove them. So some sort of expiration on the use permit, which the city perhaps could decline to enforce at their, at their option, or, or enforce it if, if they feel like it, something that would give some leverage, some jurisdiction over, over replacing obsolete, removing obsolete equipment.
So just to be, just to be clear, the, the facilities that currently exist, obviously not subject to a time limit.
Right. I understand that, but I'm sort of thinking, saying, a similar situation may arise for this, so they'll decorate half the light poles in the city with boxes, and, and in 10 years, when, when there's little tiny things available, why would they bother taking all those boxes off? Would be, and so having some sort of a, a time, a timer, and perhaps it could be ordered that it's not mandatory at the city's discretion, but at least, at least that lever could be available.
Since the majority of these will be decided by the zoning administrator, staff members, and not the planning commission meeting, perhaps that kind of wording can be placed in the approval at that level, instead of this level.
We can definitely give it a little bit more thought at the staff level and, and come back with something. I will say that one of sort of the tenants of this area of regulation is you have to be even with everyone, and so I think probably the way this will work is, permits will expire on a certain date, and they will have to come in and reapply, regardless of whether or not the city's interested in the site or not.
I second the chair's motion to close public debate.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Any more discussion?
Well, an attractive part of the, of this was the requiring the providers to use the best available equipment, because I could imagine that there would be the economical equipment that may be rather bulky, or the more expensive compact equipment, and by being able to mandate that the best available gives some leverage on the aesthetic, to make sure that the aesthetics are, are as best as can be. And so, that, that, to me, that seemed to give a fair amount of, of power by the, by whoever's approving the permit, to, to make sure that we're getting the best we can for the city.
I think that's handled before the application, the discussion with staff, that's really good. I think what would happen if it ever came to the planning commission, you have the shot clock going, and so, you know, basically, it comes to us, let's say, at day 45, right? And then we have to tell them to go find what the, we don't think this is the best, you know, equipment, can you go find it? And so it's at least another 30 days before they can come back before, and, you know, basically what happens is you run out of the shot clock, and they get what they want. But if it's something that can be put at the front end, like I said, with the discussion with the staff before the application's made, I think that's, that would be a good, I like how that, I think I'd like that kind of provision written in. I don't think it's going to do, like, Christian, Fisher said, I don't think it's going to do much, once it, if it ever has to come from the planning commission, I don't think it's, it'll, we'll have run out of time.
Well, your, your suggestion that it be caught at the staff level before, sounds good to me. They could, they could.
I think they have some power.
Either, either get compliance or, or not recommend that it be approved right at the outset.
Because at that point, they will not have even put in the application yet, so I think that there can be discussion, there's time for discussion, but once that shot clock goes, there's, it's not, it's done deal. I don't, I don't know what staff think.
Yes, we're looking at the proposed draft ordinance, and on packet page 31, this falls under the application requirements, what the contents of a permit application are required to include. And on page 31, under item number four, it's a general description of the proposed facility. So in addition to site plans, elevations, et cetera, a description of their approach for screening or camouflaging the facilities from public view is required. It also states under 4B that if any part of the proposed facility is visible, the application needs to include an explanation as to why it cannot be rendered not readily visible. So I think Andrea found something else?
That's where the meeting is. We shall schedule an appointment to submit.
Right, and then Andrea's just also mentioning on packet page 32 outlines that a meeting is required before they submit. So we would go over the required contents of the application, including looking for any kind of description for their proposed approach, an explanation of why they couldn't use some other design or technology. And item 4C also states that whenever they use a lower-ranked design approach, that they need to include technical information demonstrating why the higher-ranked option was not feasible. So it's included in the required applicant, excuse me, required application contents, but is also checked for as part of that first initial meeting with the applicant before they apply through their, their required appointment, which is set forth at the bottom of packet page 32, 1824-070Ia, which states that they need to schedule an appointment.
Okay, so then it goes back to, once it's in place, there's no, there's no monitor on it, and let's say something's been there 10 years, and there's, you know, there's an eyesore. I, I kind of like the idea of a conditional use permit that expires in 10 years. I don't know what that is actually, what I'm saying, when I'm saying that, because I don't know how much work that's costing someone, if it's unrealistic or not, but I like having some mechanism in that place that's fair, right? Because we can't be unfair and only apply it to them. But I, I think that if we have the capacity to put something in, in here that, that can potentially address that, that would be good. Because in 10 years, things are going to be completely different. I mean, 10 years ago, we had the big huge towers, now we have these really small, we have the small ones, right? So it might be this big next time, and we, you know, we should have these big long poles, these short poles or whatever in the park. So is there any way we can put any kind of? So is there any way we can put any kind of review in place to be a double check on the technology as it goes?
So I think, I don't want to say no, but I'm not sure there's a real clean way to sort of build in sort of a hammer that forces a carrier to upgrade, upgrade its equipment. But I think one of the ways you can get at what I think the concern is, is to build into the conditions in a permit, you know, visual mitigations, right? That the carrier is obligated to, to maintain for the life of the permit, right? So if you put in some sort of screening to block people from seeing the, the facility, the carrier has to continue making sure that that screening exists for the, the life of the permit.
That's partially what we're asking, what I'm asking for. Right? I guess what I'm saying is if you have a current technology which is big and bulky and for whatever reason the carrier doesn't want to make that change, maybe there's not a lot of one carrier business and so it's not cost beneficial for them to make a change. That when new technology exists, we have no mechanism to ask this, but instead the smaller and the more appealing technology. And I mean, I know that you said that you, that technology will probably drive the improvements, but I can see that there are also situations where it might not.
Yeah. No, and I totally, I mean, I appreciate the concern and certainly 10 years ago from tonight, nobody would have, at least I would not have foreseen where we are in wireless technology today. You know, this is like any other use permit, so you are essentially permitting them to build something. And I, I'm struggling to figure out a--
You can't just put an arbitrary renewal or, you can put an expiration and we have to do it for everyone and, and that comes back to what I said, what, how much of a pain is that really for the city?
Well, I don't know because again, like 10 years ago, like I said, we would have thought probably that the city would have maybe 15 large sites, right? So that's not a huge burden. If 10 years from now, the city has 400 small sites, you know, then you're talking about 40, on average, 40 applications coming back up every year and that's considerable amount of work.
Okay. All right, I see your point.
I wouldn't want to let go of this too easily in that the effort to, for the city to re-review it 10 years isn't weighing too heavy, heavily on me personally. I think that seems manageable. The, and so if there's a, I would still propose, see if my fellow commissioners agree, that we ask the city to see if there's a way to have a 10-year expiration. Technology is a little bit different than a building. Nobody, once a building's approved, you're stuck with it forever, but the technology is, it seems like it could logically fall in a different way that would allow some sort of, of a re-review.
I would just say, you know, I, I support the general notion that if technology improves and there are much better solutions than this, you know, ugly thing we got stuck with 10 years ago, I would like to see some mechanism the city would have to enforce a change. It's troublesome, how would you draw that line though such that, you know, these carriers are making, I'm sure the equipment they're putting in has a longer than 10-year lifespan, right? And I don't think it's probably realistic for us to require them to refresh it every 10 years or to, you know, or even to make their long-term investment under threat that it could all get, you know, arbitrarily obsoleted by a municipality after 10 years. So I just, you know, I, I find it troublesome, like the mechanism of that is what I find troublesome.
Yeah, I hadn't taken into consideration that we'd be forcing obsolescence on them and that's, that's gonna be, that's not gonna fly.
Yeah.
I don't know, it seems worth--
As I often say, planning is complicated, comprehensive, conflicted, and requires compromises. I would agree with Linda Burrows. I would wish that we could put all our overhead wiring underground, but I don't see how we can do it. That being said, I want to commend the staff for putting together this 50-page ordinance. A lot of work. I read it all. I understand most of it and I appreciate your work there.
So-- No, I still have several more questions. First, you know, it is obviously a very comprehensive, well-drafted ordinance. Was it based on anything in particular? If so, what? And are there, and, and if so, were there any San Carlos flavors put into it?
So I probably can answer that best. It was based on, well, first, to answer your question sort of backwards, it was based originally on the existing provisions in the San Carlos municipal code in those two chapters. And then we sort of worked off that. I met with staff several times and staff was extremely helpful in helping me figure out how to do all the, all the drafting, to basically figure out a way to make it so that staff was comfortable with the workflow that was gonna, you know, naturally come out of this and that we were striking what we thought was the right balance between, you know, community concerns and sort of the, the legal hand that's pushing down on, on the city to some extent. On top of that, it was based on my now fairly extensive research work, I guess, in this particular area of developing law. So it's sort of, it's been a couple of year work in progress and we've sort of finally landed on what we thought was a, a pretty good balance.
Got it. So we're gonna be the model code everyone else is gonna adopt, is that?
Well, you'll certainly be the newest, for sure. So everyone will look to this because you'll be the newest.
Okay.
Yeah.
I do thank Linda for her comments and I agree. I live in one of those streets with very unsightly telephone poles. I do think there might be something we can do. You know, those poles won't last forever, they will rot, they will get blown over. I, you know, I don't know if it's 20 years, 100 years or what, but eventually those are probably on the wrong side of history. But if we've got a bunch of cellphone technology that lives forever on them, they'll be much harder to go away. And on all those streets, there are light poles. So it seems like a simple ad to indicate in our standards a strong preference for mounting on streetlights over nearby telephone poles. Is that something we can add?
Yes, we can. There may be some concerns with that and it has to do with the cost to the carrier to do that, but that's certainly something we can put in and make as a, a condition when it's an available option.
Because it also looked like the designs, at least the limited things we were given to look at, the light pole designs all looked better than the utility pole designs. I think it, there's, must be a company out there producing these light pole extensions that don't look that bad where it looks like utility poles are already so ugly, they don't mind just sticking more junk on there.
Totally agree. And that's because the, the streetlight poles, you can house wiring and components within the pole, whereas a wood pole--
Right.
--you're, you know, bolting into.
Right. And is there anything that, would they have, like what case could they make to say they should be on a utility pole and not a light pole? I mean, there's power on both.
Right. Well, essentially, they have an existing right to go on to a utility pole because they are utilities. So it is, you know, I don't want to make the case here for all carriers, but they do have an existing right to go on those poles.
Does the city own the light poles? I guess I never asked that question or is that, are they owned by PG&E? I don't know.
They're streetlights. My understanding is that they are, they're maintained by the city's public works division, the streetlights.
Okay. Okay. And then I also appreciated Linda's comment on the decibel levels. I've never really heard cellphone infrastructure making noise, I'm sure it's out there. But that seems like an obvious one where we could have an objective standard. I didn't notice, is there, do we, have we placed an objective standard on, on sound in here?
It's just the normal noise ordinance. So these facilities would be subject to the same daytime and nighttime noise maximums for the different districts as it's defined in, I'm not sure which chapter, but--
Okay. I'm not familiar with that. Are those objective, like numerical decibel levels?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct. And it's based on district and time of day.
Okay. That's fair.
Could the best available technology standard apply for the noise level as well as the aesthetics? In addition, I understand there's a decibel level, which is probably a small vacuum cleaner running or something, which could be pretty annoying if it's near your house, but if there's a, the best available technology standard for noise as well as aesthetics might make a more stringent, a better solution for our town.
Well, the finding does include the available, the best available design and technology for noise and vibration. This is at the top of page 42, under number 14, sort of at the top half of that page. It does mention noise and vibration.
Okay, so then that's reassuring that we're not, that the, the ceiling for noise is not just the noise ordinance, but also the available technology would be a factor. That's helpful.
Does anyone know if these emit heat?
They do. The, the small cells, much less than the larger cells. But the main heat emitters are actually the cabinets and the, the sort of ancillary equipment that go with the antennas. And normally those are gonna be mounted separately on the pole or ground mounted.
More questions or--
Do the providers have to pay permit fees?
Yes.
Yeah, that's--
Do the providers, are they legal, legally liable for any harm that these machines might cause? Like if they fall over and cause a fire or hit somebody on the head?
I would presume so, yes.
It would just fall under the general--
tort laws.
Yes.
Can you clarify that the, the installations proposed within 600 feet of a residential area, those automatically come to the planning commission? I didn't--
If they're a macro facility, a large facility, the small cells would go before the zoning administrator. That's how the proposed ordinance is currently written.
And would there be any notice given? I mean, so if--
Yes.
They're gonna install in front of one, somebody's house, the resident will be notified?
Absolutely. In fact, we, we will require, and this is part of the submittal requirements, that the applicant conduct neighborhood outreach before they submit, before they actually file an application with the city to notify the residents.
I see. And then, and then, so then consequently, there's a, a mechanism for the residents to follow up with their concerns with the city?
Absolutely. Through, they can, you know, write and, or come and attend the zoning administrator hearing. And certainly if there are very, very many residents concerned about the particular site or location or whatever element of the facility, the zoning administrator has the authority to forward the application to the planning commission for review if they feel that the concerns of the community would be better served before the commission versus the one decision-maker zoning administrator.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just like to briefly revisit the findings. So, you know, like I stated earlier, I am uncomfortable making any subjective findings. You know, I take findings very seriously as a commissioner. In my view, you know, this is what we're signing our name to, right? If the approval comes before us or the zoning administrator, I mean, this is like, I hereby certify these above things. And so given the lack of discretion on, and am I understanding that the right way? I mean, if, does removing a finding change the standard the carrier's held to in any way? Or is, I mean, that, like, I guess I don't fundamentally understand, you know, what do the findings accomplish? I mean, we have the standards we're holding the carrier to, so what does the finding actually mean? I mean, you know, who's, who's benefit, is that just like, we sign our name, I hereby certify these findings and now the public knows the commissioner did his job and is, you know, now on record of these things? I mean, is that--
Not so much. It's, it's more sort of the guidance thresholds for what the commission, the factual determinations that the commission really needs to make in order to say yes to an application, right? So if you can't make one of the findings, in theory, your vote on that item should be no because you haven't been able to make the, the findings necessary to approve the application. So if you remove one of those findings, then you are necessarily changing sort of the benchmark that the applicant has to reach in order to get approval. Hopefully that answers the question.
I mean, and that's why, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't like that I would be asked to certify, you know, and sign my name to that a wireless facility includes the best available design. I have no idea, right? They have all the information, I have none of the information and I just get, you know, a brief report and question and answer period. And, you know, do the other commissioners share that concern given our lack of purview over these subjective matters?
I like that it makes the, there's a pause, but I don't think it gives us any, in thinking about it, I don't think there's any legal benefit because it is a subjective standard and we don't know. I mean, even within the carriers, there would be, you know, that, you know, you get one department over another one thinking that their, their equipment's the best. So I mean, what is, what is the best? So I don't-- As much as I'd, I'd like to say that, I like it to actually mean something, I don't think it's gonna bias anything.
And it means we're on record stating we made that finding when, you know, I don't think, we don't have the authority to enforce a finding like that, let alone the information to truly make it.
Perhaps the word best is too definitive, but I would hate to see one of our levers of providing input, that the technology, instead of using a five-foot square box on the pole because it's cheaper, there would be no way to, to enforce that without some language here. So I would hate to lose the entire thing. Now, I hear what you're saying, that the very best in the world is, you know, that's a bit much to, but on the other hand, that it's something that's consistent, consistent, compatible, comparable with, there's always gonna be some judgment in what we, in what we--
But like, I would say that, you know, finding number two says--
Which page are you on?
I'm on packet 41 and 42 are the list of findings. So finding number two says that the application is consistent with design standards. And see, I, like, I could find that. I could say, yes, this is consistent with those design standards or it's not consistent because I think one of the design standards talks about it being, you know, the least, you know, the least objectionable technology or something like that. So it just, to then have the catch-all, you know, down below that it's the best available design, I mean, yeah, I don't, I don't, you know, personally, I want to remove that finding because I think we can accomplish what your objective is with, is it consistent with the design standards?
Through the chair and commissioners, I did want to point out one section that could possibly give the commission-- could possibly give the commission a better comfort level or getting that objective criteria in your hands to be able to say, yes, we can make this finding. And this has to do with the application requirements, the contents of the permit application. And on page 31, again, under item number four, where it's detailing out how the facility is to be described, what you need to include to describe plans, written material, et cetera, under 4C, it does state that when a lower-ranked design approach is proposed, at the bottom of that paragraph, you know, they need to provide technical information that demonstrates it. And then at the bottom of the paragraph, it does state that the planning director can take that information and forward it to technical review. And at the bottom of page 31 outlines, under number five, the technical review process, where we take that information that has been submitted and we send it out to a professional or person who knows about this best possible design. They would be retained by the city to review the information that the applicant has provided. And that would be one way to do a peer review, to ascertain whether the wireless applicant is indeed using the best possible design. So that sort of technical review is built into the application submittal materials so that we do have the ability to send something out.
And that's great that, that we have that procedure in place, but, and that's good. I hope it's used thoroughly, but that us making that finding doesn't add or subtract to that power and procedure, correct?
If it was eliminated, no, it wouldn't subtract from that. That would still be in place anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where's the peer review language?
This is at the bottom of packet page 31. It's identified as number five, technical review.
Because my concern is, I mean, that's a good procedure, but as the, you know, the person making the finding, I don't actually know if that was or was not invoked, or, you know, what would have caused that to be invoked, but yet someone decided not to invoke it, right? I don't have any of that visibility.
Commissioner Dugan.
Would that come up in an application, in a presentation?
If we did that, we would bring it up in a presentation, just like we do architectural peer review for projects, you know, actual buildings, regular projects that we see. That would be part of the review process that we would explain to the commission.
But the greater concern is when it's not invoked, when maybe it should have been. And that would not be presented routinely.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Is it, because the section, or the finding currently reads, the wireless facility includes the best available design and technology to eliminate adverse impacts. Is it the word "technology" that's the hangup, or is it the entire section that's?
I mean, the, the hangup would be "design" because, you know, we're not even allowed to make a subjective review here. I guess I just, I do want condition 14 removed, just based on the fact we are not, we do not have the purview for subjective review here, and that, by every reading I can come up with, is a subjective finding. So, and I don't think it adds or subtracts from the power of San Carlos to regulate, as provided, whether or not we make that finding or not.
I'm okay with removing it. I'm, I'm, I could go either way. But if it's something that, I can definitely see why you would want that, and so I have no problem supporting it. And the council's going to make the final decision. Anyway, we make a recommendation, and I'm sure in your presentation to council, you'll explain, you know, why we, we made the decisions that we did. And then as in another note, you guys have been talking about design, I've been thinking coverage or designing the, you know, how it's, you know, invisibility, right? Not the, the actual design of the technology itself, right? So, I mean, even just talking here, there's ambiguity even with design means, so.
Exactly. And on the same vein, I would like to tweak finding 11, which says alternate designs or locations were considered. I mean, I'm not sure that's going to be the case. I mean, they, they will submit their design, and only if concerns are raised will alternates be considered, I believe. And it's certainly not the city necessarily considering alternates. I mean, it sounds like we're asking the applicant to consider alternates, and, you know, again, how can I find that? I have no idea if they've considered alternates. So I would propose just having that finding say, the proposed design is consistent with the general plan and otherwise minimizes impacts. I'm comfortable with that. But saying alternate designs or locations were considered, I'm not sure how I can routinely make, or not just me, it's mostly going to be the, the staff and the zoning administrator. I don't know how they can routinely make that finding. And again, I don't see the incremental benefit of that finding over just saying the proposed design is consistent with the general plan.
Well, I think that if there's verbiage in there that speaks to the, somehow into the collaboration process, in other words, if, if the carrier comes and said, I want to put it here, but the city says, you know, we'd really like you to consider to putting it here, this is where all of them are, and do you have to have it here? And that dialogue happens, if there's a way to make sure that dialogue happens. I'm not sure, maybe it's handled again in the, at the beginning instead of in the findings, but I'd like to make sure that that opportunity exists between the city and the carrier to, to actually make those decisions, not, and it wouldn't necessarily be put on the back. I don't want the carrier to have the say-so that, yeah, we, we made that decision.
Exactly. But this is just our finding, so it has nothing to do with the back and forth between the carrier and staff, and they certainly have that purview. It's just when it, you know, if, if the design is presented and the staff's like, yeah, that looks like the last 40 we approved, it's approved, well, in fact, no alternate designs or locations would have been considered at that point, so why would we routinely make that finding when in fact, no other locations or designs were considered? You know, and that's all I'm trying to say. The finding doesn't seem consistent with the process that's going to be undertaken here.
And through the chair, if I may, one thing that might address what you're talking about is I think for that finding specifically, it's maybe more applicable to new antennas, where we're saying, we'd rather have you co-locate, or we'd rather, in a residential district, move two poles this way because there's a tree that's helping, you know, shield it. And I think one thing for staff is that the finding gives us some sort of teeth when we're negotiating that, of saying, you're not meeting this finding, why can't you move it 10 feet one direction or the other? I think for co-locations or existing antennas, it doesn't really, like you said, make as much sense, but I think for new ones, it might have some more value.
Could you say something, the staff has discretion to recommend an alternate site of like, what is it, standards or whatever? In other words, if we think we have something that's of the like standards that they could use, and we want to put them on a colo instead of on a new one, I mean, is there a way to put that in there?
Well, that is in there. We're just talking about what finding we end up making as the outcome. Or, you know, when we sign our name on the bottom verifying what's been done. So again, I'm wrestling with, like, what does a finding actually do? What's the impact of it? And, you know, is that, is it accurate? You know, I don't want to sign my name on the bottom saying, absolutely, alternate designs or locations were considered, when I think if it's, you know, a routine permit for a co-located device, no. I don't think alternate designs or locations will be considered. So I don't see any benefit to making that finding. Because, I mean, I think, staff, I think you have the hammer of, you know, the design, you know, all the findings are, go towards whether or not it meets the, the objective standards.
So I think we're, it feels like we're going down a bit of a rabbit hole as to what a finding, what we're, what we're signing on to when we're saying we're finding something. I mean, I don't think we've actually given it this kind of scrutiny, and maybe it needs that kind of scrutiny, because I certainly haven't put the depth of, I'm not on.
I just take it seriously, because this is what we are certifying. And to be honest, I've been a little uncomfortable with the findings that we routinely boilerplate onto the end of our approvals, but those findings are coming verbatim out of our zoning code as it exists. So that's why I'm slowing down here, because we're creating new code here. And this is, these are the findings that are going to be boilerplated on the back of everything that gets approved under this, which will be hundreds of applications. So I don't want to routinely certify that alternate designs or locations were considered when.
Because we're rubber stamping.
In many cases, they won't. So I would like to just strike, just make finding 11, instead of saying alternate designs or locations were considered, just say, the proposed design is consistent with the general plan. You know, I, I think that accomplishes, and these are, these are my only two concerns. And I think 14 should just be struck, because it's purely subjective, and we don't even have any subjective authority here at all.
Yeah, subjective doesn't really give you much teeth on anything in any context, so I'm, I'm fine with, with that. As anyone else, I'm doing a lot of talking, is anyone else have anything to say?
I'm still concerned that we're losing whatever little leverage we have. We exist as a planning commission to, to.
My.
The interest of the community. If we say, sorry, we can't, we have no input as to what the equipment looks like, we're not doing our job. So while I hear your concern and would like to have the concern be addressed by just striking the whole concept, it was put in here originally for a reason, there's some logic for why, why it was here, and I'd like to try to preserve some of that.
And that's fair.
Leverage the planning commission has as to what kind of equipment is, is used. I mean, otherwise, we're, we're just helpless to, to have any input on an application.
But I, that's why I'm, I'm probing this, and everything I've heard is saying that the findings don't add or subtract from the review process. And again, finding number two says it's consistent with design standards. So we're going to make the finding whether or not it's consistent with the design standards. And, you know, we received a whole six-page memo saying we can only make those sort of objective findings, and under no case can we make a subjective finding such as set forth in 14. That's, 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 so I don't think we're at, in my, you know, in my opinion and what I've heard, I don't think we're adding or subtracting in any way our authority by removing 14.
By removing the clause that says they must look at alternative sites, we're losing some discretion by doing that. Just to say, well, it meets the general plan, isn't, I mean, that's necessary. But I think it strengthens the planning commission and the zoning administrator and the planning staff's position to be able to require them to look at alternative sites. Environmental documentation requires you look at alternatives, although this is exempt from CEQA, but that doesn't mean it's bad to look at alternative sites.
And, and, and that's not, removing the finding doesn't, in my understanding, does not change that, because that design is still under the design standards where it's located. You know, we have our list of location preferences under the design standards. And, you know, our second finding is that the application is consistent with that. So that's what we're saying. But, I mean, I'm not sure how we can be comfortable saying every time alternate designs or locations were considered, because on many of the applications, that won't be true. So how can we make a finding that we know in probably at least half the applications won't be true? That's why I'm pausing here and wanting to be precise, because that, you know, every single application that comes through for a simple add to an existing facility is going to have us certifying that alternate designs and/or locations were considered. And, and they won't be, they just won't be. So, you know, maybe there's a way to phrase that, you know, and, and maybe it is for new, new locations, you know, I guess I'd be comfortable saying that. But my point is, the findings are just simply what we have to certify each and every time one of these things gets approved. It's not changing the design standards, and we certainly have.
The larger ones.
Condition number two, which says their application has to be consistent with all design standards, which of course includes the location preference.
But remember, only that chart that showed, I think, 10 or 12 cases that would all be decided by the zoning administrator, only one of them would come to the planning commission.
And that's also, you know, but they are also going to be asked to make these findings. And I don't think it's fair for any of, of the decision bodies to be forced to make findings that, in the case of 11, are not going to be true all the time, and in case of 14, requires a purview that they specifically don't have.
And their design standards?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, like, for our noise zoning, I mean, it specifically says what the objective noise standard is. So when the applicant comes to us and says, you know, we want to put this forth, they have to have, basically, they give us a design section specify and certify that it's within what our standards are. So that's basically what you're saying here, right? And with the words that we have in there now, I mean, we don't have the teeth to back it up, because we don't know what the actual best design is for, for the.
Exactly. But in each and every case, we're going to be handing the carrier our name, signed at the bottom, certifying that it was in fact the best design. I'm not comfortable doing that.
Well, is there objections to, from, what the other commissioners think about?
No, I'd be comfortable with modifying.
I get, I get what you're saying. I don't see where the applicable standards that we're falling back on refer to using, I hate to, I don't know, the word "best technology," it may be too much, but, but just something that, that allows the reviewer to, to say, there's a much better model. You're using the economical, ugly model, we want you to use the slightly more expensive, streamlined version. And so where, where would that, the power to ask for that lie if we take that out?
Yeah, it's a good question. And if, if the actual design standards aren't beefy enough there, they should be beefed up, as opposed to just asking us to randomly find it without that design standard having been previously enforced.
So, so I, so I, I think I get, I'm not a lawyer, but I think I get what you're talking about, about having it be a subjective finding, but I don't want to just strike it without making sure we haven't mitigated, mitigated the original purpose of that language that was put in there elsewhere.
It's a very fair question. Is there, does our code, does, do the design, where, where in the design standards are they being held to this best available design and technology standard?
Well, the design standards begin on packet page number 36, and they go through design preferences for, you know, where to locate on a building or structure, and then they move to location preferences, which is really pointed towards zoning districts. And then there's specific requirements for tower-mounted facilities, facilities in the right-of-way, and it goes on, and I'm just looking, and then it goes into height. There is one section under J, maintenance of city character. So a wireless facility should, and this is at the top of page, packet page 39J, maintenance of city character, shall be designed and located to minimize the impact on the surrounding neighborhood and to maintain the character. To that end, the wireless facility should employ the least intrusive design for the proposed location in terms of size, mass, visual, physical impact.
Yeah, I'd also say in C, visual impact, it's also requiring the design would create, would not create excessive visual clutter, or would otherwise create harms the city may ameliorate. So we've got the standard of no excessive visual clutter, and then employ the least intrusive design, and then camouflage.
The one thing that it doesn't seem to, you know, do in terms of hitting the nail on the head. on the head, is the alternative designs, locations aspect that was mentioned in the finding. And I can ask our deputy city attorney if that would provide any sort of wrinkle in having a compliant ordinance if we were to include something like that in the design standards?
Well, I think, isn't that captured just by the design, the location preference under A2?
And through the chair, yes, but I think sort of on a more micro level, no pun intended. If we're looking, let's say, at micro facilities, and there's 20 going within a neighborhood, do we have the teeth to be able to say, you know, "This pole isn't great, there's nothing really shielding it, please move it a few poles down?" So I guess more of the, you know, fine tuning of those.
Right, but this is, again, a finding, not a design standard. So if you don't think the design standards are adequate to enforce that, it's not proper, in my opinion, to rely just on a finding that's finding something that's not actually in the design standards. So finding number two captures everything in the design standards. So that concern, I'm sure is a great concern, so let's make absolutely certain it's captured in the design standards.
I think we can support the commission's, if that were the commission's recommendation, that's something that we could support in terms of removing it as a finding, but including it under the design standards. Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
But just so you're clear, one of the findings is that the proposal is consistent with the design standards. So you'll still be making a finding on the point, it'll just be as part of a larger finding.
Exactly, but we won't be certifying that alternates were considered when that might not be true, and we won't be making all the subjective findings in 14.
I'd be okay with, I'd be okay with what Lisa was, I'm suggesting, that if we could move that.
I mean, we are, this is new, this isn't, yeah.
So I will move the San Carlos Planning Commission adopted resolution recommending our city council amends chapter 18, point 24, per in wireless telecommunications facilities, per in, and rescission of chapters 12, point 32, per in wireless telecommunications facilities of the San Carlos municipal code, with the amendment of omitting 14, was it?
Can we just have staff provide an overview of the changes?
Yeah, can I give you what I have?
Yes.
Okay. So for finding 11, under section 18, 24, 100, that will be changed to read, "The proposed design is consistent with the general plan and otherwise minimize the impacts, the impact of the WCF and support structure modifications in addition to the greatest extents possible." Finding 14, under that same section, will be completely stricken. There will be a new design standard provision that staff will draft and include to capture the ability for staff to have the applicant demonstrate that they've looked at alternative sites when necessary, and give staff the ability to require that they cite the facilities on the most suitable location. At one point, I heard a preference for streetlights over utility poles. Is that part of the motion?
Part sounded good, but we didn't capture the design, this is a design technology part of it, unless, unless, although I'm fairly satisfied with the existing language in here of employing the least intrusive design.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, yeah.
As far as poles, I mean, utility poles versus light poles, is, I don't know enough about them to know if what we're proposing, if there's a negative to it. Do you know if what we're proposing is a negative to it or not?
I think we're just specifying a design preference for it. If they can make that demonstration that the design is infeasible on a light pole as opposed to the utility pole, the utility pole's still available to them. So I think what I propose was just a design preference, one higher on the list, to be on the light pole instead of the utility pole.
Okay, I'm okay with design preference. I think that's fine.
And that's all of the proposed changes I heard. Is there any more that I missed?
I don't think so.
Okay, so then that is now part of the motion.
Thank you. Thank you for the...
Motion with the amendments.
One second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Dugan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bergman?
Yes.
And Chair Bradley?
Yes. Thank you for all your work on this, staff and...
This has been like two years in the making, hasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So next, we have a brief reports, correspondence, and general information. First off, report on any recent city council actions.
And then to share with you this evening, the council has been on break, just like the commission, so maybe at the next meeting, I might have more information to share.
When will the new council be inaugurated?
I think I saw that they have a special meeting, maybe even this...
It happened.
Oh, maybe it just happened?
Yeah, it was like, whatever, yeah.
Well, they were inaugurated at the second council meeting in December, just before the break.
Oh.
But they will officially be seated right here on the dais. Their next scheduled meeting is January 14th.
Next week, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I've been down in the desert, I don't know what's going on. And it was cold, it was as cold down there as here, and it rained. Planning Commission reports, comments. Lisa, you'll talk about this. Okay. So correspondence?
Yes, I left on the dais another copy of a training opportunity for planning commissioners here in San Mateo County, and this is sponsored by 21 Elements, and it's just a friendly reminder, if you're interested and can fit it on your schedule, please RSVP to Joshua Abrams on the flyer. There is an email sort of almost to the bottom, abrams@bdplanning.com. All you have to do is send an email and let him know that you will be attending, and of course, we encourage you all to attend to the extent that your schedules permit. So that is just a friendly reminder. And then moving on to the last item, oh, second to the last item on the agenda, just a couple updates. The next planning commission meeting is scheduled for January 22nd, and this is on a Tuesday, so just a reminder about that. We did have an item on the agenda that is now going to be postponed to March, so I just wanted to state this and provide a verbal update to you. So what will be on the agenda for the 22nd is the Circle Star application, and this is an application to change the traffic output from the site, and it was a detail that was required in a previous development agreement. So to change it, you have to go through the process to change it. So it'd come here before it'd go to the city council. And then the applicants for the project at 560 El Camino Real, you looked at that just before the break, and it was continued. The applicant has informed staff that they are ready to return, and it looks like we can schedule them on for the 22nd. Aside from that, the item that was scheduled to be on the agenda for later this month was the EIR scoping meeting for the Black Mountain 68 Townhouse project. However, it's not quite ready to go. We want to do a little bit more public outreach, and staff spoke with the applicant team, and the decision was to push this to a meeting in March. So that'll be postponed for a little bit, and we'll make sure to do the outreach for that, so that the public can attend and make meaningful comments. So I just wanted to update you that that will not be coming later this month, but instead for March. And then, just as far as attendance goes, I did receive word from Commissioner Dugan and Commissioner Bergman that they will not be available on January 22nd, so that leaves Commissioners Chair Bradley and Commissioners Roof and Ike Pony available for that meeting. So in any event that you cannot, any one of the three cannot attend as well, just please let me know, so we can make adjustments to the calendar.
I'm good.
Okay. I'll send out an email.
My wife said to tell you all that I, that we cut our vacation short, just so I could make the meeting tonight. That's what she said.
Tell your wife you're thankful.
I wasn't going to say anything.
Horizon Wireless thanks you.
And that is all I have this evening.
I'll mention on this, there's also April 30th, the San Mateo County housing session in your flyer, and the one on the 31st, I'm going to do 100 years of American city planning history in 10 minutes, I promise. Normally, it takes two years, but...
And I just heard that staff is invited to attend, so if any of you do go, you can be joined by some of us here.
End it in two hours, not bad for considering what all we accomplished tonight. Thanks, and welcome, Attorney Kai.
Thank you very much.
Good job. I declare the meeting adjourned.